Good evening, we're going to start with the public hearing.
Excellent. Good evening, everyone. So, we are, we're kind of doing things a little different. Typically, we do our public safety hearing, which we already did at our last meeting. But since our last meeting, New York State has put a new regulation in. This regulation is called an Automated External Defibrillation Program. I know, I can't say it. I like to call it AED. So, one of the new regulations says every district has to have an AED program put in place, and that it needs to be attached to our school safety plan. So, being that this part of it was not in our last hearing, we need to have an additional hearing for this amendment. And from now on, this will just be part of our school safety plan. So, what you're going to be doing is you're still going to be approving your school safety plan, because we have to have that in place and approved by the start of the school year. And then, 30 days later, at the last September meeting, you're going to officially approve the AED program. All right, so it's a little backwards, but it's all going to work out. And then, once you approve everything, we're going to add both of them together, and that'll be part of the school safety plan. So, the school safety, the AED program is, the regulation says it has to be part of the school safety plan. We already have a policy on it. There's no need to change the policy, no changes there. The only change is you really have to add a program to it. And this was, this was agreed upon on July 24th, '25, and it's called DSHS, DSHS Law. And that was the addition of this AED program, and that's the major, major piece of it. And this language here that we have listed on the agenda, that will also go into the school safety plan as well. Okay, so that's the addition. So, I want to just bring everyone through the, just some highlights of the AED program. Now, the district has always had a great AED program, but it wasn't necessarily written out like this. So, a lot of these things were in place. We are adding a lot of changes to it. We're making it a little bit more official, and we're really just organizing it. And I think it'll be a nice thing to have it all in a packet and organized. But I have to say, our district has had a robust AED program, AED plan, and when we go through this, you'll see what I mean by that. So, one of the new pieces is you have to have an AED program coordinator. And Stephanie Carbone, being that she oversees, our Director of Student Support Services, hello Stephanie over there, being that she oversees the nurses and oversees student support services, I appointed her as the AED coordinator, so she'll be coordinating this. My job as a superintendent is to kind of get it up and running, to get this program organized, and then she'll be taking the reins from here. So, I'm just going to go over a couple highlights of it. So, the first part is training. Training is huge. Now, the, this new, this new regulation really mandates that we offer formal training of AED, of AED operation. But we have to remember, though, even though it says we need to have formal training, you don't have to be trained to use an AED. They are designed with voice prompts and built-in safeguards, so it actually brings you through it. So, anyone, no matter what, even if you never had a training in it, as long as you know where they're located, can use the AED, because it actually walks you through it as you go. So, the regulation says people have to be trained, but in, you know, if there's ever an emergency, anybody can do it. So, one thing that we're doing is we're making sure people understand that, but we're also training some core people in our, in our school district community. And we're going to do a yearly training that Stephanie's going to organize. We're going to have someone from an organization come in. Our school nurses will make sure we have that training. Administrators will have the training, after-school chaperones, and anyone else interested in the training can join. One addition that I'm going to add to this as well is cleaners, because they're often in the buildings at night. We're going to try to get some cleaners to come and get trained as well. Again, the more that are trained, the better. So, that is one piece of the training. The third part of the training is we need to make sure that our faculty has an understanding of where they're located, and just generally how to use it, in case there ever was an emergency. You know, the person closest to that AED should be the one to grab it. So, we're going to do a yearly informal training that our school nurses will do during each faculty meeting in every building. So, every faculty member will know where they're located and generally how to do it, but we'll have people officially trained. It would be impossible to have everybody officially trained, but like we said, you don't have to be to use it, but you do have to have that in place in order to do that. So, the next piece is AEDs, the locations of them. Now, I went through an inventory of our AED units. Chatham is very fortunate. We have 12 AED units in our district, which is a huge number. You know, the more, the better. The thing is, these are very expensive, thousands of dollars to purchase one, so we need to make sure that we're, you know, really utilizing all of these. When I was doing this inventory, a couple things I discovered is that our bus garage does not have an AED, and also our public library does not have an AED. So, as, as we speak, the middle school actually, or before I wrote this plan, the middle school actually had five AEDs, all right, which is, which is extensive. You know, of course, the more, the better. But what I decided to do, and what I, and what I told the middle school is we're going to have to move one of those over to the bus garage. So, that will leave four of those. So, if you look in the plan, I'll just review where they're all located. At the elementary school, we have one in the main lobby. We have one in the nurse's office, and one in the MED basement. In the middle school now, we have one in the main lobby, one in the gymnasium area, one in the eighth-grade hallway, and then one outside. So, that outside one is used, you know, during PE class or any other sports activities that are at the middle school. And then, at the high school, we have one in the main lobby, one in the nurse's office, one outside, and then the athletic department has one, especially for baseball, because baseball's off-campus. So, our coaches also will bring that with them as well. So, that is where they're located, and now we're going to have one in the bus garage. I'm going to be moving that in there next week. That's going to be moved there, but we have to give them training on that as well, so it'll be part of that training. And then, I told Mike, and I'm going to be telling the board, that we, I'm recommending that we don't take any others out of the buildings, because that would, you know, you don't want to take one away, and god forbid something happened, right, that, that we could have prevented. I'm going to recommend that we purchase one more for the public library. Right now, the public library does not have one, but I do think it's our obligation, being that we run that public library, that we, that we put one in there. So, that's a recommendation that I have for, and I think we'll be able to do that, you know, better safe than sorry. So, the next, so that's the locations. We have plenty of them, which is great. We have to have regular inspections, and these will be regular inspections by the nurses, making sure they're going on, but you have to have formal, monthly inspections. And what that is, and there's, in this addendum, there's actually a login sheet that you have to log that every, so that way someone's logging them, so that's documented on a monthly basis that they're using. And you have to have ongoing maintenance with them, and we have our maintenance department help us with the cases and making sure that's all set. So, we're in the process of kind of looking at those. There's some questions on the locks, because some of them have keys on them, some do not. So, we have to make decisions, you know, on that. Do we really need them to be locked? We want them to be open to everybody, so they really shouldn't be locked. So, those are questions that, that we have to talk more about, that I'm getting questions to as we are starting to dig into this deeper. There's also procedures on what to do if you use it, right? There's regulations on there, and there's now forms in there that they have to fill out if you do use it. And Stephanie would get a copy of that if it was used, and also, we would be sending one of these to need them as well, if they were ever used. So, there's documentation requirements as well. So, that's really kind of it in a nutshell. We have a good plan now in place. This will be something we'll review yearly, but Stephanie will be taking the lead on checking into these and working with our school nurses on these as well from this time forward. Any questions on the AED program?
I have two questions.
Sure.
It seems that these sheets are new.
Yeah.
Did we, I mean, how did we formalize this in the house?
So, they have log sheets, but they weren't, everyone was doing a little bit differently in the buildings, but we definitely did have log sheets before, but they weren't in like a packet necessarily. They just kind of tracked them. It's a little bit more organized this way.
Do the cases have alarms?
No, I don't believe they do have alarms. Now, and that's a question. You don't need a case for them? Like, our nurse's office does not have a case for, because you want to make them as accessible as possible. We've never had any issues, as far as I've ever heard, of anyone ever playing or doing anything with them, and that would be a...
But some are locked right now.
That's what I'm hearing. Some buildings, I guess they have a key for them, and others keep them open? So, we got to, we got to look into that a little bit closer. But in my eye, it really should, gosh, they should be available, and...
If every adult in the building knows what key is, and it's like up someplace...
Yeah, yeah. Stephanie, I just discovered that, you know, I think yesterday, about the whole key issue that came up in an email. We've been going back and forth on this. So, Stephanie and I will talk about that and come up with a plan on how we're going to approach that.
I just had a comment. I know at the Little League Complex, where the baseball scene, the varsity baseball team, they have an AED on site as well in the building, and every one of those coaches have to go through a yearly training every, annually, before the season begins, so that's covered too.
So, good, good. So, that's a new regulation, actually, this year, is that every coach in, in New York State has to have CPR training, which is also included AED training. So, every coach of ours will also be treated as well. It goes automatically with CPR, and that's just a brand-new requirement, which is a good thing, because if you look at where most kids are getting, you know, injured in those, it happens to be in sports. So, that, I think a lot of these changes from the state and these updates and these, you know, a little bit more rigorous regulations is really coming from the whole Damar Hamlin, you know, from the Buffalo Bills. I know that's where some of this came from, the governor, as well.
You know, I have one more question slash comment. It would seem appropriate to me that we have locks on availability in the same locations that the AEDs are.
The what in the?
The lock zone. And I don't, that's in our camp?
Yep.
And I don't know what type of complications that raises.
Yeah, no, we can look into that.
From the perspective of, there's an emergency of that type, going to one location would make sense.
There's also those bleed, got those donated from, I know in Lebanon.
We don't have 12 of them.
No, we have one in every building, right? We should have, and I know that, I'll have to look into that as well, if those are locked. I don't know. There's bleeding kits that the Sheriff's Department donated a couple years ago to all the Columbia County schools. I'll look into all three of those. I'm curious if those have locks. Any other questions? I'll look into the lock aspect of it. Okay, that's the end of the hearing.
Do we have to have a motion to adjourn?
Okay, all right, motion to adjourn the district's safety.
Motion.
And you'll approve this. We have to do 30 days. You'll approve it the second September meeting, just so you all know.
Any additional questions? On favor?
Aye.
Our regulations need to be ordered?
...to the United States of America, the United Republic of which it stands, the mission under God, and to deliver the正义 of justice to all.
So, the mission statement. The mission of the Chatham Central School District is to provide students and education that may have intellectual curiosity and focuses on academic and cultural foundations. Our students will graduate with knowledge, problem-solving abilities and character needed to participate in education, adapt, succeed, and keep the beat in their future educational career and community endeavors. Approval of the presence of gender. Your motion?
Motion.
Any questions? On favor? Any questions? Anyone from the public? Any more?
I'm sure we're going to get into it, but there's a lot of community interest in the progress of the project, and some anxiety, both at the, you know, in the general community, students, parents. I guess I'm looking forward to, to resolution, to the extent these are going to be resolved this year. So, we'll talk, we'll talk about that. And I mean, too late, we have a, we have a project meeting tomorrow.
And my plan is, is to send an update to our faculty and staff tomorrow, and also to our parents with some details. But I can assure you, while you brought it up, that we will be opening on, our, all of our students will be welcome on, what day is it? Thursday? Thursday, the, Thursday the 4th. We'll be open, right, but we'll give more details on that.
The kids were spreading rumors.
I heard, I heard some rumors that...
Yeah, like the first two months of school are canceled.
Yeah, that's not happening. And we're, and we have no plans to go virtually, no plans to go virtually. We'll be in, there might be some amendments, and we'll talk, you know, I'm trying to get the details on that. There might be some adjustments, but...
I reassured them that even in the worst-case scenario, they would have to go to school.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We'll be ready. It's going to be close, but we'll be ready.
So, moving on to superintendent for court.
All right, so I'll talk a little bit about that, too. So, the first thing I wanted to do is I just wanted to thank our summer staff. You know, it's interesting, as a, as a superintendent, when I was a principal, you know, some friends and family will say, "What are you doing this summer? Oh, my gosh, if you only knew." Summers are incredibly busy, and so is all of our staff and faculty that work all summer long, so I want to thank them. Our, our schools are, are being cleaned. You know, if you look around the elementary school, you'll see how beautiful the floors look. Same with at the middle school. The high school, we're getting there. You know, it's going to take a little bit of extra time, and the, and I'll just kind of get into the project now while we're, while we're talking about it. So, that we have a very extensive project happening in Chatham this summer. You know, we're, we're looking at about 16 classrooms being completely renovated from head to toe. Every single fixture, every single wall, all the way up to the, to the roof, all the way down under the dirt, to be honest with you, completely being remodeled. So, when you take on 16 classrooms like that, that's a huge project to do in about seven to eight weeks. So, yes, it's going to be right up to the end, but our contractors are assuring us that it's going to be finished. There are some things, though, that are going to be adjusted, and we're looking for details on that tomorrow. Like, not all of the, some of the furniture might not be in, some of the cabinetry might not be in, but we'll be making adjustments to that. But we will have, to be, we will be a lot, we'll be able to have students in. Mike met with our movers today. They're coming in next week to start moving all the materials back in the classrooms. So, we have a good plan in place, and our, and our contractors are working very hard to get it done, but it's a lot of work to get done in that amount of time. But we have to do it, and our contractors have to do it, and they're obligated to do it. So, we're optimistic that it's going to be, you know, just fine. It might not be completely done, but they'll be finishing it on second shifts and on weekends. Maybe some of the stuff on some of the holiday breaks, if they need more time. But it will be, you know, it will be ready to go for the first day of school. So, I'll be sending more information. We have a project meeting. We meet, we meet, we have, they have a daily meeting, but then myself and Mike and all of the project manager teams come in every Wednesday to have a big project meeting, and that's when we'll get the full update of what exactly to expect and what amendments will be made. And I'll be communicating that out to teachers. But as of now, the deadlines that we talked about, 26 is when the, the rooms in the school primarily will be ready to go. Not everything will be cleaned by that time. Everything should be cleaned and ready to go by the 29th, and that's when teachers can come back in to set up their rooms and such. So, we're getting there. We're getting there, but more details on that after my meeting tomorrow. Mike, anything else you wanted to say about the project that you, while we're talking about it?
It's been a lot of work. It's, it's been a very busy summer. And, but I, I took my son to, to school, to UB, so I was gone Friday and Monday, and I was back, back today, and so I checked, I did a walk-around Thursday, and then I did a walk-around, obviously, today. And I was, I was impressed with the amount we've been pushing, and Andrew and myself, we go to the meetings, we really push, and our construction manager's done a great job of, you know, saying we really have to get the kids in. So, I saw a huge improvement, a lot of work get done. Yeah, like Andrew said, we're going to get there. I mean, some of the stuff, the cosmetics or some of the nicer things, you know, that have to come in a little later. But, but what I see is at the end, I can see, like I did last year with those six rooms, it's just, and the bathroom, it's, it's just such a much nicer facility. So, you put up with some of this for some time, but it's going to be a million times nicer. So, I'm really excited for what we're doing, but it's been a little hectic.
And I just want to thank everyone for their understanding and flexibility and patience as we all work through this project together. Like, like Mike said, it's, it's a lot. It's an investment from our taxpayers, and, but it's going to be a really great addition to our high school. We're pretty much going to have a new high school when this is done, by, by next summer. It's pretty amazing, pretty amazing. And I love that it's academic spaces. I love that it's where the class, the kids spend most of their time. That's what we're focusing on. It's real, you know, and, and a lot of studies say, when you build these facilities and educational spaces for kids, you know, they tend to be more motivated and really proud of what they're doing in there. So, it's exciting, really exciting. So, all right, any questions from the board on the project? That's it. More details to come after tomorrow.
Okay, it's a silly question. Do they have lead time on the metal for the front signage there?
So, there, they told me we should see pretty much a finished project by the end of this week, but it will be up. I didn't realize how much goes into that. The lighting is in, you know, the whole, the whole, it's really just the cosmetic metal, but that will be up and running. They promised me, I even heard as, as soon as Friday.
I just, that, that's excellent. I just know, you know, it's the first thing you see.
Yeah, 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 exactly. The pavement, you'll see when you walk in, it's looking cleaner, even from yesterday. I know, I know that Mary Ann and Dawn were there. They even cleaned a lot up. That's going to be fully paved on Friday. They're putting all the pavement down Friday. Yeah, because you saw it Thursday as well. No, Mary Ann did, right? Yeah, and it's... Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they did a lot. Yeah, so it's coming together. It just takes time. It's not a quick process. And the thing we have to remember, too, is what they did, in those science and art rooms, they literally had to dig into the dirt to put the plumbing in, because we don't have a basement, right? So, they literally had to dig into the dirt, and that's a whole process. And then, our floors, you know, they, they take time. Floors are not easy. And you have to, you have to then, after you dig from it, then you then have to, you know, prepare them so they're straight and flat, and it's a lot of, it's a lot of time. And it takes individual carpenters to do each part of that, right? So, unfortunately, they, they, they have to depend on each other to get the next step done. But they're doing a great job, doing a great job.
Okay, so now, now I have another question. So, they, they had to re-cure the floors, presumably?
Yeah.
Was that done, you know, in a hurry? Was that done, like, when did they, when did they pour?
So, they have been pouring room by room. Yeah, slowly but surely. Yeah, no, there's a, there's a, a carpenter who, that's his expertise, and literally, he's been doing one room at a time. It's been fun to watch.
So, they're not necessarily going to be fully cured, although it's not like students are very heavy?
Yeah, no, they'll, they'll be, they'll be ready, because the, it's taken, you know, they've been doing one room at a time for it. They just did the last room on Friday. The cement truck was in and cementing, yeah. Pretty impressive. But no, it'll be ready. No, but they're taking their time, and it's a fine cra, fine craftsmen's doing that. The same person's doing all that cement pouring and digging and...
There's tile on top of the concrete? I forget.
Yeah, there was tile, and that's what we'll be back on there. Yep, so there's dirt, piping, dirt, concrete, then the tile. It's impressive. And not the whole floor was reconcreted, but a lot of it was, because we're putting in our science rooms and putting all these stations with sinks in the art rooms that were never there before. So, a lot, you'll see, if you, you know, if we end up being able to go take a look. Wasn't the whole floor. It was just parts of it.
It wasn't the six classrooms that got...
No, tho, those floors, those were just new floors. They didn't have to dig those up. Yeah, and we're just talking to science, and it was because of the plumbing and the electric that they had to put in the floor. Really interesting philosophy, those rooms. So, let's talk about, if you want to put that up real quick, I'm just going to go through this quickly. Our, we had some great summer programs here at the, at Chatham this summer. And the, the Arbor Academy, which is our, which is our sixth-to-eighth grade program, they shared a presentation that I said I would share with you. They shared it with me. Very impressive on what they did, and I'm just going to go through this with you very quickly. All right. To share, you get to share with the public as well. Okay, there you go. See, here are the next one. All right, so, that one, sorry. And again, I'm just a messenger on this. I did not put this together, so I can't really answer a whole lot of questions unless someone else can. But the Arbor Academy, July 7th to 31st, was a month program. We had, it was 8:30, 11:30, Monday through Thursday. We met at MED this year. They, they had it in that, in that school. It was for students in grade six to eight. It had about 20 students enrolled. We, we had, and we won't go through that right now, but there was a flyer to families asking them to register. It was a really great opportunity, and, and they, and they tried to make it a lot of fun, but it was for kids that maybe needed a little extra support. We had three teachers, Sarah Murray, Christine Mikelski, and Jen Matrando were our teachers for that. Go to the next page. And in general, the goal is, is, you know, you want kids to really keep that transition. The goal is you don't want them to regress, and you want to give them some of that academic, but also make it fun and exciting. So, so, every day, they had a fitness and wellness activity, group walk, and several activities at the middle school. They went back and forth to the middle school and the elementary school all the time. Of course, they have their snack. They had a main activity, and then they had their daily check-in. You know, there's many lesson plans. The activity ranged from a whole bunch of science activities, math activities, you name it. They have many different things in there. We won't get into there. But daily check-in survey, they had a daily survey that the kids asked, and they, they put results, and then we're not going to, we're not going to go through those results right now, but they were very positive as I, as I reviewed them. Go to the next page. So, every day, they had their fitness and wellness time, and you can see they kind of went all over Chatham. And here's some, here's some photos of them. You know, it's hard to get kids to come to summer school, especially when it's not mandated. So, they had 20 enrolled, but they averaged about 12, you know, 12 kids per day, game, 12 to 15 kids per day. The next page. Here's, here's an example of some of the activities that they did. They did some journaling, directed drawing with writing. You'll see they, you know, use their computers to do it. So, the, the goal of this is academic-based, but also fun and exciting, and the goal is so students don't regress over the summer. But it also, there's some challenging activities in that as well. And there's some kids that, that are going just for the fun of it, right, as well? So, it's really open to any great kids in sixth, eighth grade. Go to the next page. There's also an elementary school program as well, also in a special education program. So, they often look at those kids together to kind of help support them and play games with them and do activities at MED. So, that, in that room, that's a combination of, I think, two different programs in there. They also did a fun activity, making pizza in the fax room as well. Again, they worked really hard to try to keep it fun. I know when I taught summer school, I said, you know, "This is the kid's summer. We got to make this." We got, I want to make them want to come every day. So, I always try to do fun activities as well. It's really important. Here's some pictures from a really amazing event that all three of our summer school programs came together and participated in. It was a touch-a-truck event, which was really impressive. So, they had ice cream there. They had several race cars there, a dump truck, and some other vehicles, right in MED, and the kids just loved it. It was just a fun activity, kind, rather than doing a field trip out, we did kind of a field trip in. Kids were having a blast. It was a lot of fun. So, here's an example, and it was for all the summer school programs. And here's just another fun activity they did, a money activity. Kind of keep it fun. And it's a good way, you know, a big piece of it, socialization, as we know, our, our students are very social beings. So, this is the end-of-year program evaluation. You know, I can share the results with you another time. I know we don't have a lot of time today, but they did it under the year survey, just to get feedback on it. And that's, and that's kind of how they did it. So, one thing they were talking about, maybe in the future, is, is because it was hard to keep the rigor of the kids coming every time, maybe, maybe breaking it up and having families sign up for certain weeks instead, rather than a full commitment to the whole thing. So, that's another, you know, when we're evaluating the program. That way, we can know exactly how many kids are coming and really make the, and have the families kind of really commit to that one or two weeks, so that way, we can make sure our staffing is adequate and making sure we don't have too much staff or not enough staff, because the hardest part is getting the kids to come. So, this is only the sixth, eighth program that, that this is about. And Stephanie will talk about the special education program and her update. Any questions? Yeah, I thought you guys looked like this. They made it for me, and I said, "I'm going to share it with the board, too." I thought you would be interested to see the photo. Any other questions, folks? All right, I still have a couple other things. I'm going to, if you don't mind, I have it later in the agenda, but I figure I'll just do it all at once. Do you want to open up the goals, please? So, you're going to approve the goals for the year, the goals and priorities. I figure I'll just, if you don't mind, I'll just do it now, rather than... Would anyone like another copy of the goals, paper copy? You know, you have them in your agenda. Anybody want a paper copy of them? So, I just want to publicly talk about this a little bit. The board had an open workshop in August, where, and so back in July, we did an overview of the end-of-year update with the goals. I made some recommendations on what priorities that we should continue on with, which ones we should look at redoing, and I made a couple just generic recommendations to the board. Then, at that meeting, the board decided they wanted more time to really hash through these, so we had a open workshop, I believe it was, you know, beginning of August, where we really went through these goals and priorities, and we made some decisions on them. So, we all came together to do that, and I'm happy to say, you know, I took everything that, that all of you gave us for feedback. So we all came together to do that. And I'm happy to say, you know, I took everything that, that all of you gave us for feedback and advice. And then we put this in, in place. I'm really, really excited about these goals. I'm really proud of these goals. I think, I think these are really, it's a really kind of our pathway. Last year was really a rebuilding year. We had a lot of changes, me as a new superintendent, a lot of new administrators. And a lot of the, the goals were really organized to kind of set the stage and to set, you know, the protocols and set the procedures to start meeting some of these goals. So you'll see these goals are a little bit more specific, a lot more specific actually. That we're, that we're looking at, at, at specific, you know, things that we're going to accomplish and, and specific goals from there. So I'm just going to kind of highlight a couple of them. These will be posted. I'll be sharing these with faculty and staff as well. I'll make sure everyone has a copy of these. I'll be doing a mid-year update in about February of every year, then an end of the year update. But a lot of my updates, my weekly update and all of my, a lot of my updates that I'll be doing as, during my board agenda are going to pertain to these goals. And I'll be talking about how we're achieving these as we go. So wellness, we, and what the board decided to do, they decided to keep the same goals that they had. So you'll notice we have a wellness goal, an academic goal, a fiscal goal, and a school safety goal. And then from there, we put together priorities and the priorities is how, how we're going to accomplish the goals. The, the goals are very broad. The priorities are very specific. Some of the priorities are the same from the past. Many of them are, are different in bringing it off the step. So just to go through the wellness priority really quick. So the wellness committee will help support plan interventions and create programming for students and staff's wellbeing, utilizing the results from the student and staff wellness survey. So we'll be using that data that we're doing for the survey to help that committee do it. The newly established district mental health team will evaluate the district's mental health curriculum for each building and make needed updates based on best research practices and students' needs. Again, we're going to be using the paraholistic student assessment. Like an example was one of our goals, or one of our priorities last year was to come up with a tool. We came up with the tool. Now we're going to be using that tool. And then another thing that was added to, to this was, was through the district's website and communication. Parents and community members will be kept informed of our school's continuing and newly implemented approaches to student and staff wellness as a district moves forward in its commitment to quality of life and overall health. So in the academic goal, you're going to see there's something similar. On the website, there's going to be, there's going to be sections on, on our academics in Chatham and also our wellness in Chatham as well. And we'll have updates on there as we go throughout the year. And we'll continually be adding to that. When we go to our academic goal, MTSS was, was a big thing that we were going to structure our MTSS groups. So we're diving deeper in that. Regular MTSS data meetings will be held at each building throughout the twenty-five, twenty-six school year to monitor student progress, to enter students into tier two or tier three intervention and to exit students from tier two or tier three. MTSS should be fluid and kids should be kind of going in and out depending on what they need at the time and specific based on their individual goals as learners. So these meetings are going to really kind of help us, help us monitor that to make sure kids are in the right spot. One of our goals, or one of our priorities last year was to organize our student data. So we, the district decided to use a, a system called RightPath to monitor the effectiveness, usefulness and impact of the data to identify a student's individual strengths. And faculty and staff will utilize this information to improve instruction. So this RightPath tool is going to hold all of our student data. So that way a teacher can log on onto RightPath and they'll have a snapshot of all their students. A principal can log on and have a snapshot of all the students in the grades. I, as a superintendent, can log on and have a snapshot of all the, the students' progress in the district. It's going to take time to add everything to this and by, you know, imagine a couple of years, we're going to have all these comparative data. And we can see where a kid was in elementary, middle school and where they ended up in high school. As long as we're, you know, we keep the same, the same tool. Terry's working with the team there to, to develop that. We'll be giving training to teachers in the fall and they'll be ready to go on that. Work with teacher leaders to identify program and curricular needs. So that's a huge goal, same as last year. Where similar to learn, similar to wellness, we're going to be creating a Chatham CSC's academic program and curriculum instruction and types of assessment will be communicated with our community through the district website. So the goal is by the end of this year, and possibly this could be a couple of year project, I'm sure. But the goal is, is that a parent could law, could go onto the website and see what their fifth grader is doing in fifth grade, what assessments they're using. So they can have a real true understanding of what their kids are learning. And that will be organized by grade, by subject. It's going to take some time to put it all in there, but we're excited about that. I think that's important to, to do for our community. And then we added a special education goal. The special education department will increase the percentage of students with disabilities meeting or exceeding their individualized education plans, academic goals by ten percent as measured by annual IEP reviews, progress monitoring data, and growth demonstrated on the iReady diagnostic assessment. So that's an ambitious goal, but we're looking for our students. We want to see our, all of our students show growth and show success. And, and that is the same with our special education students. So we're really hoping that we're going to see some real progress on their goals as well. And the thing is, we want to be challenging all of our students, including our IEP students. So, you know, the goal is, is, is if they achieve their goal, we make a more rigorous goal for the, for the next one. And then with the ultimate goal is maybe they're not going to need special ed anymore. Our goal in special education is that, that our students someday with the right interventions, with the right instruction, they're not going to need that, that, those supports anymore. That's the goal for every one of our students. A big goal that's near and dear to my heart is the district will build local community partnerships to enhance workforce development and college career readiness in at least two programs. Big focus is really embedding some of these community partnerships into our classes in all the schools. So a lot more coming on that. I'm just going to really quickly fiscal goals. I'm not going to read those to you. The capital project, making sure that we're meeting the needs of our budget based on our, our, you know, what we have offered. You know, ensuring the staff adequately meets the program needs and fiscal realities of the district. Fiscal realities are true. We have only so much money to spend, so we'll be monitoring that closely and continuing to monitor our strong rating. Safety goals, we're going to continue to hold regular safety committee meetings to review procedures. We're going to be, again, we're going to, we're going to dive into this deep is we need to have school safety procedures for after-school events. This was a goal last year. We're going to continue to have it a goal this year. And then also we're going to be making sure we communicate the comprehensive school threat assessment to all teachers, not just the ones on the team. And that is a quick review of our priorities and goals. Any questions from the board? So you'll approve this later in the meeting? Yes?
This isn't circulated beyond the cabinet until we approve, right? Or have you already begun?
So I've, I've shared it with our team members, but I told them it's not official till you approve it at today's meeting. Yeah, yeah. We haven't started to work on anything yet though.
Will you be doing that presentation on the goals and priorities like the first day this?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how to do that, you know, in a timely manner without, you know. So I think I might highlight a couple of them and give them all a copy of it at the event. But yes, they will have it on the first day of school is my plan. The goals.
These are really good.
Yeah, yeah.
They give a lot of room, but they also will bear cause through evidence that shows and that becomes its own kind of data.
Yeah, yeah.
So these are, these are really good.
Yeah, my plan is to have a copy of this when they walk in. So they'll have this and then I'm going to highlight a couple of them because I want them to know that this is super important. And I want them to know that everything that we do is going to be aligned to these. You know, the, the, the principals and all of our department chairs. What they're going to end up doing is they're going to be taking these and they're going to be doing, doing other areas, kind of making their own goals from here that I'll be kind of monitoring and looking at and it's going to help me report back to you. So it's all, it all kind of comes together if we're all working on it together. But yes, my plan is to introduce them at our welcome back day. Hence why I really, you know, appreciate that we were able to move through and work on these throughout the summer. So we were ready to go in September. Okay, done with that now. Just want to talk really quick about our administration PD. You know, part of the summer is to really learn, right? So I took advantage of that and we've had a couple of retreats with our administrative team talking about having difficult conversations, about communication and some other leadership skills that we've all been learning together and working together on. I had our school attorney in today to talk about more human resource type things and paperwork and how to document and, and really making sure we're following through on things as well. So we've had a lot of great PD together. We've had some really nice time together as well. And I have to just say, I feel so fortunate to have such an amazing administrative team here in Chatham. And speaking of teams, we, we don't have, it's not official because we're still waiting for some specifics. But facilities director, we have facilities director interviews today. Or not today, this week, last week, last week, yeah, last week. I don't even know where I am. But I'm happy to say we have a final, we have a final candidate. I can't announce the person yet because it, we are having to do fingerprints and some other things, but it should be really close. I was hoping to be able to have it all ready to, to fit, make it official today. But what I'm going to have to do is I'll have to do a superintendent's approval. We're hoping this person is going to start September eighth is the plan. I'll do a superintendent's approval and then you'll officially approve them on the ninth. We're hoping the person is going to start on the eighth. So it's all looking good. I'm super excited about this person. Very passionate and I, I, he's going to be a great fit to chat him. And I can't wait to tell you more about him once it's official. That's all I have.
Wait, one question there, just to clarify. We have a tentative accept, right?
Yeah. I just can't, until he's fingerprinted, I can't put him on the agenda publicly.
Okay, um, so what I have on tonight is not all the data from last year, but little snippets and more is coming. If you want to go to the next slide. So the, the big thing that is not in here currently are New York State scores and the reason for that, I will say it on a really good note. There's preliminary data out there, but it's in that embargo corrections phase, it's called. So there could still be some changes. That's one piece of the other pieces. There's no comparative data. So we can't really see how did we do in Columbia County or the Pelosi's region or the state. So it's a lot of raw data that probably isn't the most useful right now. But we'll be presenting on all the New York State data coming this fall, once that is all fully exposed. So we'll start with the iReady data. iReady is our, is the universal screener that we use, K8, and I know you're all familiar with that. Just, just a couple of quick things that I would share with you. So some of these numbers are really good. There's areas where we need to grow and improve. I think any data you look at, that's usually the case. I think I would stress too, this is just one measurement of, of the kids. It's one snapshot. Obviously, as I said, the different state scores, class grades, there's a whole litany of other things that we use for data, but sorry about that. I almost forgot the mic. Oops. So the, the other thing I, I would share with you too is over the summer, you, you had approved as part of the summer curriculum work. We did an iReady project and we focused on a number of things there, but one of them was really rolling this out well because part of the, I know we've talked about this before. Trying to communicate to families, to within the staff, but to the kids. That what this is, why are you doing it? What's the point? K8 to talk to them about it and really try to improve the, kind of the mindset about iReady. Okay, so a lot of work went into that. I'm really excited. I think we'll have a more robust rollout this year. And some would look forward to that. But with that said, a couple of things. So I, what I have for you is this year. But at the end, if you look through this, I know, sent this out to you last week. I created a, like a cohort slide too, to, and I'll explain why I did what I did. I, my, my friend Stephanie here next to me too, she's in iReady showroom, so I had her at next to me. One of the things is I keep learning more and more and more about iReady and I've been, I've worked with this for the last few years. One thing they really stress is looking at one year growth. Fall to spring, June to, or excuse me, September to June. They don't recommend like June to June or something like that because the metrics of the diagnostic can change. The kids can change, what's being measured can change. So following that, you see what I have for you. So there's my introduction to that. And for each section, so if you want to go ahead and through that slide, please. We start with MED. So this is K5. And this is looking at the whole year, starting with where were we in September and where were we in June? So this is super simplistic when I say this, but the gist really is you want to grow green. You want to shrink yellow and you want to do everything you tend to make red disappear. That's as, as simple as it gets, right? So as a, as a building, if you look at this, the MED green, there was a thirty-seven percent growth this year. And you see the little lines in the green. So you have mid or above grade level and then early on grade level. Yellow is one grade level below and then the red and then red with the lines, you can have two grade levels or more below. Looking at that too, we talked a lot this year about MTSS and tier two and tier three. That's the red section. Okay, the students where we're really, these are the, the kids where we're trying to close those gaps. But we identified that need that, that intervention from a remediation standpoint. So again, green thirty-seven percent growth this year in this building. Yellow, cut it in half from fifty to twenty-five. And, and the red was reduced twenty-five to fourteen percent. If you think too about from an MTSS standpoint, and again, we want that to be zero. That's obviously what we're shooting for one big line of green, right? In a perfect world, that's what we would have. With the MTSS piece, remember we said for tier two, ten to fifteen percent and tier three should be under five percent. So if you look at that, that comes to fourteen percent total. Again, we don't want any red, but if that's where we are, we're within that range. We're not shooting for that, but that's, that's growth. I think when you look, that's, that's kind of the takeaway there in this building with reading. Okay? And you're going to see, so I gave you everything. I won't go through every single grade level and pause and explain it because now that you know what we're looking at, it kind of explains itself. But I'll, if we can, so we'll probably go through these kind of quickly here here. So with kindergarten, pretty amazing. I know you probably shouldn't see any red because I don't know how you'd be two grade levels below. I don't know where you'd go down there, but.
Yeah, and so that's, that's common to see in kindergarten because, you know, don't forget the fourth time, right?
Look at, look at that green growth. That's pretty impressive. That's pretty great. For first grade, had a little, little red there and that disappeared by the end of the year. Again, really nice growth with the on and above grade level. And, and again, so I know you've looked at this and I don't want to awkwardly go through all the slides. So you dramatically pause at each one, but, but I think as you go through and take a look, you, you're going to see that we, this year, we may grow in each, in each grade. And I'll pause there with reading. Math is going to be very similar and I'll go through that data. But any questions on the reading?
Can you go back to grade four for a second? Just to clarify what I'm looking at.
Yep.
September twenty-four. That is a measure of how iReady is assessing that cohort. The grasp of the full year curriculum.
Yes, and the thing, yes, and the thing that is interesting with iReady is it's a intuitive assessment, meaning the que- the next question is based on, if you have the previous one correct. So yes, that's your question. It's measuring fourth grade, the looking ahead. It's kind of like a benchmark of where are they now?
And I, and I know that there's some, you know, there's some big problems that we're still dealing with from COVID in this, this demographic and some other nearby demographics, but that is more than half at the end of the year to not make grade level. What I'm seeing. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
So the yellow is one grade level below. And then red is two. I don't know if you can read that. And then the lines means three or more. Terry, how long have you been using iReady?
Terry, how long have you been using iReady?
Um, from what I looked at in the previous data, and this is why with the cohort, I'll explain this a little more too. It looks to me like three years old implementation. Here's what I found with, with data pieces. But it looked maybe like there was preliminary or maybe like a highlight of it before then.
We, we, we've been using it for close to 10 years, but you're right. The, it's, it's been more formalized, I think, as time has gone on, as adoption has increased.
Kind of like that universal screener piece, it looked to me like a solid like three years, I would say. And then before then, there was kind of a sporadic data. Okay, math. So again, I'll kind of repeat what I did with reading here. Green, you see an increase from 12% beginning of the year to 47%. Yellow, 60 down to 43 and red 28 to 10. So again, that trend of growth continues, we see. And go ahead, Harrison. So again, nice growth with kindergarten again. And we kind of, you can go through quick, slowly and probably keep moving there. And if anybody has a question with math, you can go ahead and yell and we'll. And you can pause here just for a second. So when you look at the reading and the math in this building, the green grew, the yellow shrunk and the red shrunk. Overall, that, that's a good takeaway. Areas to focus on, the MTSS, again, I would say, when you add that all up and look at a, kind of a mean with our tier two and tier three students, it, you know, there's a 20% growth there just with those students who would follow that. So that's really good that we're, we're, again, that red we're reducing down. Obviously, when you do that, yellow and green would grow. You hope it goes all to green, not yellow. But that's good. I know with, with the MTSS schools that we have this year and next year, that's a, a really good area that we can continue this growth on.
And just so everyone knows, this could be, this is an indicator on whether or not a child would qualify for MTSS. And this also is an indicator whether or not that they would be at a tier two or a tier three. So your red kids are going to be at a tier two or three, right? You might have a couple of yellows as well. But they might only be serviced one or two times a week. Or if you're in the red, you're going to be serviced, you know, three to five times a week. And a lot of the ones in red are also our special education students, don't forget. So the ones, and if they're not, that's when the data team needs to do that analysis. That, that's why one of our goals is that teams, MTSS data teams will be held at each building throughout the year because they're, they need to hone in hot into them. Now, this is only one snapshot assessment. This isn't the be all end all. This is just one day of what they did. But this is one data point and there's several other data points that we'll be using at those MTSS data meetings to make those decisions on what kids need to be in what tier and to see how we can move them through. So this is, this is one that all of our students take, so that's why we're sharing with you. But there are many other data points. This isn't the be all end all by any means because it doesn't tell us everything.
And at the other end of the spectrum too, from an MTSS standpoint in September, you have students scoring way off the charts. That's data we can look at as well, is this student, is enrichment. Because where this student is is two, three, fourth grade, maybe beyond that. So it does give you a lot of, again, what, what we're hoping to do is individualized instruction, right? And so what you're not seeing clearly, we wouldn't do this, is individual students up here. But this allows us and the MTSS team and the classroom teachers and the administrators to look at individual students. And so when you do that, when you drill down and look at them, that's a lot more, that's a lot richer than looking at this. I, I think this is clear and easy and you can all see this, but it's really looking at that individual data. That, that's, I think, what the best part of iReady is.
And that's why we have right path, right? So this will be on the right path with everything else as well. So you could look at the individual students. So it all kind of comes together.
It'll be interesting to look at this, like the New York State scores.
Right next to each other, right? To see, all right, they, they ended up, they're in the red here or they're in the green here, but they got a two on the ELA, you know, why is that? And then those were those discussions.
There did seem to be a lot more yellow on the math than there was with the reading. So at some point, when you put those two data points together, is that a time to take a look at what math instruction is going on?
Yeah, and that's where these conversations come, that's where the data meeting. You know, the most important part is what you do with this data, right? And that's why those data meetings are crucial.
Again, you don't want to over or undervalue any piece of data, right? You don't want to say, well, clearly this student's way far, far behind because of this one day. And stuff, but you also don't want to ignore something when it's screaming at you that this student needs intervention, so.
And then special education comes in place here too because you need this data to determine if they qualify for MTSS. And if they get MTSS and we're still not seeing growth, then we go to special ed, right? And if we haven't tried all of this, you got to try everything first before you go to special ed. So it all kind of comes together in full circle.
So this slide and the next one is just a cohort table that I created for you, going back into the question of how long we've been doing it. So I dug through some old iReady data that the district had. And it made, while one sense because there wasn't data beyond two or back. And then the other piece, and this is the cohort data problem, that, you know, it's not like massive changes, but the kids do change. Students move in and out of the district. So it gets further and further from apples to apples as you get further away from the, the benchmark starting point. But for our rising second, third and fourth graders, I took their, their kindergarten fall score and then the fifth and sixth graders rising their second grade score. And this is where they were in the fall of that, you know, rollout of iReady. And then the next one is where they are currently. Okay, so clearly the growth is pronounced there. I think you probably expect that to be the case. But it does give at least a, a little bit of a, and I, we have, I have data from every year, you know, all three benchmarks, but I thought this would just offer a picture.
Our, our kids are learning.
They are, they are, and there's certainly really good growth there. And that's what you want to see. And you can go to the next one and it's somewhere where.
Could you expand a little bit on why we're not looking at June to June or September to September at all?
So, yes, and the reason, the primary reason why is I wanted to talk to curriculum associates to create all these diagnostics. And I asked them, what, basically, I said, what would the benefit be if I did a June to June or September to September? Because then we can see, that gives us a different picture of growth. And their response was these diagnostics, the, the norms of them and then the metrics that they're using in them are meant to be one current year because they can change year to year. And that, that's probably, that really, Matt, that's primarily the answer to that. I don't know exactly what those differences are, but I'm kind of following their, their recommendations.
We actually talked about that today.
We did.
We talked about that today and, and he reached out for guidance and they said, you really shouldn't do that because they're created for this approach. They're the experts in the data.
Well, I, I can appreciate their commentary, but we're spending an awful lot of money on this product. And if we wanted to do that type of comparison, how would we do it?
It would be similar to the way this stuff, this would be.
All of that data, like I could show you. So if we took like the rising sixth grader, so.
Like, i, is it, this is cautionary grade assault? Because I, I thought that was with all of the cohort data. Is it, is there really no value in that at all? Because I would think that would be useful.
I, to, I, my honest answer is I'm not sure because when you look at the, the June to June data, because I actually did that. I looked at them and my, I kept coming back to that question, what's being measured? If it's, if the, the test at the end of fourth grade versus the test at the end of fifth grade is drastically different, I don't know what we're, what we're measuring that we're getting. Yeah, so that, that's really, but I do have that. We can look at June to June, September to September, January to January, like mid-year. We have all of that. I have a collection of all of them, the cohort data. I don't know, it, I'm not sure, I guess would be my answer because I just don't know what it's, how the measurements would differ. And that's what gave me, you're right, being kind of the grain of salt, the cautionary tale. I didn't want to share something that I don't know what's being measured. And the state assessment, I know it's being measured, the standards for that year. This, I don't want to offer something and give a false narrative about it.
I, I think as a board member, we're looking to things that are a little bit different than, you know, the teachers that are down the trenches and intervention staff. I think what we need to know is are cohorts going in the right direction or the wrong direction and how fast are they moving? And if iReady is not going to provide that, that data, it's totally useless for that. And then we need a different measure to know that about the cohort. So, I mean, maybe the data is useful for that.
Yep.
But if it's not, then we need a different way to do that.
Yeah. Well, we're doing, part of purchasing iReady too, is we get professional development with them. And they'll be joining us at our November 4th PD day to offer tons of resources about the data and the diagnosis and all the other assessments that are available in there. That's where I think we can get that answered. And ask, I mean, literally, I asked that question. But I think to dive deeper into it is, is wise to do.
We can, yeah, we can, we can have them dive deeper into it. Reasoning for giving us that guidance.
That's it. Can you actually go back a couple of slides into, it'll say, there it is. Yep, you go ahead. Yep. So, so folks, same, same exact stuff now, but for the middle school, six, some of the eighth grade. And I'll just pause on these kind of building wide slides here. So again, we look at the, we'll look at the colors. Green improved 34 to 40%, yellow reduced a bit. An area where I think we can focus on this year. And red reduced, trending in the right direction, growth there, but areas to, to focus on. And go with for sure. And then sixth grade reading. People in seventh. To eight. And then math for the middle school. Again, you see a, a nice grow, growth here in the green from, from 27 to, excuse me, from eight. 22 to 41%, sorry about that. And so nice growth with, with middle school math. Yellow increased, so we don't, that's definitely an area to focus on. We want to make that number smaller. But we saw a nice reduction in the red there. So 20% reduction into a more. Okay, and you can go ahead and cancel and quit through those, get up on. Okay, and I'll pause here just for a second. So like we talked about with MED, if we look at the tier two, tier three, 12% reduction there, so not quite as large as, as MED, but it's, but still a nice growth measurement there. Again, room, room to grow, room to focus on. As I mentioned, we started with iReady. I think a focused rollout, being clear on what we're doing, why we're doing it, what the measurement is for, I think will only help that. Including parents in this and talking about this and making it clear to all stakeholders why we're using it and what the data is for should only help with that.
I have kind of a beginning's question. Is the September test, like a pre-test, is it testing the same knowledge?
It, so again, it covers what's measured in that year, but it's not the same test. No, it's a, it's different. And then each question that a student answers, and from test to test to test, the, it would be progressive as you go through.
And it's, it's not necessarily just two tests, right? I mean, that's tracked throughout the year. And so it just wears the map at the beginning of the year and wears it at the end of the year.
And we do a January diagnostic as well.
Okay, the diagnostic places a student in a place.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Figures out where they're at.
At that moment in time, yes.
So they might start out high, and it's going to go to their level. So it changes. Every kid's taking a different test depending on how they do on it. Some kids will be answering, you know, if you're fifth grade, you might be answering, depending on how you're doing, you might go all the way down to first grade or you might be all the way up to, was it up to eighth grade? Eighth grade question. So it really, it, it goes to your level.
And there are iReady lessons and questions as part of the iReady platform that are just, so you have those three diagnostics, September, January and June. But there's other resources as part of being an iReady tool when you're using it that are a part of that piece. Yes.
And the teachers at MTSS, they use it more often because there should be, you know, monitoring.
What is MTSS?
It's a multi-tiered system of support. And essentially that is meeting students where they are. So when we identify students as tier two or tier three for interventions via remediation or enrichment. So when you have a student kind of at both edges, if you will, the kids who might need remediation, kids who need that enrichment, that's multi-tiered system of support. On top of academics, it is social, emotional, learning, attendance, behavior. It, it kind of really looks at a whole student and allows the school to truly try to make that personalized educational, you know, support for a student. So.
We'll give you a packet that Terry put together.
It should be on the drive too, so we can point in that direction.
There's actually two presentations you did on that.
Yes, yeah. Okay, and then I have some more cohort data again for you. And you'll see, I just, I chose fourth grade to go back in time for the current rise in some of these nine figures. Again, we see growth. Rising nine figures like that to be higher. So again, you are, we are seeing that trend. We are seeing the growth. We are seeing them, that proficiency level come up. So that is iReady. And again, I'll, I'll finish it where I started by saying, again, it is just one tool. It is just one measurement. There's no tool that's, this will tell us everything. Because if it, if it did exist, everyone would use it and it would be wonderful, but.
The issue is, there's not a whole lot of tools out there.
That's true.
This is one that most districts use. Honestly, I can't think of any that don't use it.
Okay, so moving on. So the, the high school data update for you. What I have is. Go one more. So we'll start first off with.
Andrew and Steve, just so you know, iReady stops at eighth grade. That's why there's not iReady data. So that's, we got to come up with other things and that's what Terry's going to show you.
With, with the high school, without getting into the region data right now, working with, with Miles and Justin and some high school folks, thought it would be helpful to share with you final grades from courses. So starting at the mastery level, so this would be that 85% and higher. So this is any student, final grade of 85 or higher. And you'll see, we have 307 students. That was our enrollment in June. That was final tally there. Total number of students earning. Total number of students earning eighty-five or higher in at least one course. So that's pretty impressive. Ninety-six percent of our high school students got eighty-five or better in at least one course.
And are we, what courses are we talking about?
Every course.
So are the?
We did not, we talked a little bit about that and we didn't just do core classes or this is any credit bearing class in the high school. Okay? Um, next slide down there, total number, no, you can stay on that, sorry. Total number of students eighty-five or higher in at least two courses and then at least three. So, you know, again, so is this probably in your mind, you start thinking, those numbers look really good. Um, Andrew's quick question, is this all classes? And then the, how is grading? That, see, this, this is how we use data, right? Like, how, what is this telling us? So are all?
And obviously, when the regions come out, we'll be doing comparisons. Okay, this kid did this on and what were their, and that's the whole conversation.
Okay.
But that's, but that's why we do this, to have these conversations.
And when you have a student who, you know, has eighty-five or higher, seven classes, what's going on there? What, what's going right or, or not? You know, so this does give a lot of information, but it also, most importantly, brings up a lot of questions.
And don't forget, there will be data meetings at the high school to talk about this data.
There you go. Excellent. Thank you. So now, everyone who was on the previous slide is on this slide too, but now we just bump it up to ninety. Okay? So same, one course, two courses, three courses. Um, still the excellent results here, uh, three hundred and seventy students, two hundred and eighty-seven of them, ninety-three percent had a ninety or higher in at least one course. And we see seventy-five percent were in two courses and sixty-three percent in three plus. That could be seven classes, eight classes. So, and there were students with high grades in every single class they took, from, you know, PE, foreign language, everywhere across the board. So, um, again, I think, you know, and, uh, and Matt, to your point, when you're with the teachers, we're looking at this a little differently, maybe in a faculty meeting. What compromises is, how did we get here? Is this right? When we look at the regions, is it completely skewed? Because that would be a problem to talk about. So, um, but I wanted to share that with you. So the next slide then, um, so these, these are course failures. Okay? So those three hundred and seven students, how many, um, earned a grade of, you know, less than sixty-five or, or under sixty-five, sixty-four or less? Forty-one students, um, in at least one course, so thirteen percent. You see, as we get to at least two and three or more, that number drops precipitously. Um, and again, so why is this? So th- those are the questions asked. How did, how did we achieve that? Okay? Questions on that?
Just a comment, Terry.
Sure.
This kind of data has been collected in many different ways in a lot of different districts. Where, Terry, though, is the thing to look at when you decide the why?
Yes.
Why is the big question and how do we address the why? So while I agree with Matt's point about the board maybe where the homework information, it's important to take the body of information that's the most relevant at this time, get the teachers, find relevant, SWF is relevant, and to see where we're going to go with it.
Yeah.
Again, the good thing about this is that, which you just said, is the.
And, Linda, a hundred percent, and the comparative data. So again, looking at this, then we look at regions, then you look maybe at midterm data and look at the regions. Do they gel? Are they polar opposites? Because then we need to make instructional and assessment changes based on that, so.
The other important thing that I heard Andrew say is that when you look at grades, we're also looking at other factors, absentias, kids who work outside, outside of school, all these things, these variables that only depend on a picture of that student.
Yes.
And when I was at the leadership conference, one of the things they were talking about is giving kids agency within their own skill set when you're talking about that in terms of forming partnerships. They still have to meet the standards, but it also takes us beyond that. So that's why this is really good. MTSS in the high school that every student uses to learn and get picture of the student.
The nice part about breakdown is it's going to have all of that data for each kid, all of the students. You could look at attendments, you could look at regions, you could make that three-day assessments when they took them, um, they took, like, quarterly grades and it's going to be, to talk about conversations and that. It's going to really, I, I think it's going to be in changes in the conversation because rather than being all over the place and flipping through pages, what did you order for regions, what did? So I'm excited about that.
I just had a question. How often are the data meetings, are you sitting down and talking about?
The, the MTSS or overall?
The overall, just to get that clear.
So these are new.
And that was the other question. Has this been done in the past? Is it all right now?
It started last year.
Well, you know, with the, with the MTSS meetings, it's looking at where the students are constantly at any moment in time. Um, and the universal screener being iReady K is an example. That's like the big pull. If you scored here, you're, you're tier two or tier three. But then a classroom teacher might say, I saw, and Andrew, this goes back to your question too about what is MTSS? There's other factors that can pull into that. Um, is, did student have a road that day, or something going on during iReady testing? And this is not typical. It was, you know, sick or there was something going on outside of school or what happened. Um, I'm thinking to just, like, a question I would ask, those, those forty-one students, that's, that's good, the numbers are low and, but let's, you have a faculty meeting, we put those kids' names up and say, okay, does anyone know if there's something going on with Nancy? I mean, really, right, getting that, that, dig down that deep, where we're saying what's going on and, and we get to those, you know, eight students with, with several courses, we need to solve that. Or likewise on the previous ones, what are, what are the kids that were actually hired? So constantly, I mean, this is really the, the, the pull of, of all of this. That is your question?
It does. And then when you get later in the presentation.
Okay. So the next slide, high school, um, this is our, these are AP exam scores. So what I am presenting to you, this is how the college board releases scores. Okay, if you're wondering, why did he do mean score and then percentage scores level three or higher? This is what the college board sends to school districts. Primarily, I think, one, the mean score shows you overall kind of an average of how your kids did. The other one is every college is different as far as accepting AP credit. Some will take three and up, some will take four and up, some won't take either, they'll only take five or nothing. So, um, the, this is how our students did. So English Lit and Com, and I won't beat all of these too, but you see the number of our Chatham students who took it, the mean score that they received. So the average score on the English Lit composition was four point one seven. And then a little bit there in parentheses is the New York State average. So across New York State, students who took that AP exam scored three point two two average. So we're above that for that exam. Okay? Percentage of scores that were level three, and just so you're aware, it's, it's level one, two, three, four, or five of the scores. Percentage of scores level three or higher, a hundred percent. So all of our students earned that. Seventy-four percent was the state average. Okay? And, and again, I, I won't read this all to you, it's all right there, but that's what you're looking at.
Can I ask about this one?
Sure.
So I, I don't want to draw too many conclusions from a single year here.
Yep.
Um, I'm looking at, you know, the, the mean score is below three. Um, and, and I guess it's really the percentage of scores over three that, that really I should be looking at, not necessarily the mean. Um, I mean, they're, they're basically getting no college credit if they don't score at least a three, right?
Essentially, yeah.
Yeah. Um, I know that you can't always predict who's going to do what and, you know, diverting based on speculation is just hard. Um, is the general program goal, put people in these programs when we think that, um, there's a good chance that they can get a three? Is that the?
I mean, I think more and more it's, it's an open opportunity. There are sometimes requirements to get into the class as far as prerequisites.
Yeah.
To me.
Well, we, we, we've discussed this, um, not with math on the screen, but we discussed it in a previous day, um, not too long ago, we were talking about, well, what are the conditions for AP selection? Um, and I know maybe some of this is going to be solved by really clear MTSS criteria. Um, but I was just curious, what are, like, what is a reason when someone should be looking at that? And we should be encouraging that? When is, when is a situation where we should be focusing someone on, on something more achievable?
It's always, there's a lot, it's a educational philosophy, right? That some schools' AP courses are wide open, anyone can sign up, anyone can take it, as long as you understand as a student and family, this, this is a tough, tough course. If you take AP English as your twelfth grade English and you were to fail it, you wouldn't graduate. Right? So I mean, that, and there, there are real.
There's very specific requirements to get in, especially the.
Yeah. And when, anyone where there's a, I think a lot of schools, when there's a four-year requirement, and if you were somehow to fail that, you wouldn't graduate, that's usually common. Whereas some of the other ones, it's truly an elective opportunity, so it's easier. Yeah.
Okay. And you don't have to take the AP final.
It's like the final.
It's, yeah, that's usually a local decision, course decision.
Well, if you don't take the AP final, then why you take the region's final instead? You know, but, um.
So let's say with US history.
I know, when I took AP, I didn't take the AP. I wanted experience, I didn't.
I, I imagine the teacher would have to.
I'm sorry, just curious.
So the courses where there's a region too, FIA, like US history, they do both. You, well, you have to take the region. So if you want that, the regions are advanced designation, you need to take that anyway. Um, world history, same thing, they would take the global history, regions exam, world history would be the exam. Um, but, but there's no, because it's a, it's a local course, so the requirements are a local decision. So, but I mean, you see where, where we are, and I think, again, there's some really great news there, and then areas where we can look into that. Um, and, and I think too, Matt, to your question, I think, again, you get it a mean different ways, right? So how, like, how many fives were there and how many ones were there? You don't see that, right? Like, because I gave you what the college board gives to school districts, but when we start breaking it down by student, you have a whole lot of fives and a whole lot of ones, so we don't want that either, right? That wouldn't be a good, that, that would be really bad if that's what happened. But we landed at three point five, that, you know, so what comprises that obviously matters. Um, but that's why the percentage of scores three and higher is a good.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think really what I was just wondering was, if we're looking at three or higher and we're only at a fifty percent, right? Presuming that there's no other variables we're aware of, um, in that course, that would be, go get flagged for us, right? Say, what's going on here?
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, I know. Okay. And by the way, I, I, this is like really easy to read and understand what's going on, so I like that.
Okay, yes.
I like that.
And I never know when you're sharing data with what's.
No, I really like this.
I appreciate you saying that.
And I like the stuff that's coming up next.
Okay. So, okay, moving on to chronic absenteeism. So this is one, you know, Andrew and I talked a lot about this. Um, you're probably familiar with, because I know when, um, the comptroller, when, uh, Dan Applewood put out his report in October, this shook a lot of people because that was a major, major report. Um, and I, we, we felt like this would be something to share about. This is a problem, I will say to you, that is literally in every school in this country. Uh, just go back to COVID, seems like it, but the further we get away, this problem is sticking around. Um, so chronic absenteeism is defined as missing ten percent of school days. So roughly that's eighteen absences or more, a hundred and eighty days of school. So generally, so when you think, see how you just change it like that?
And I see your face on it.
That's a lot. You know, when you think about the number, it kind of stops you. Ten percent is like, this eighteen days of school. There's some, that's a whole month or some months with the D P, right? So, uh, I will share with you before we go through this, the New York State rates averages, um, high school was thirty-four point one percent of the kids were chronically absent. This is across the state. Um, and then middle school and elementary were combined, and it was twenty-six and a half percent. So pretty stark and shocking even higher.
I never understand why they don't break that one.
I know. It is, it is odd. And then, so the national numbers generally are K-12, which are even more skewed. Um, in New York, if you ever see that in Dan Applewood's report, you've seen this in other things, we're, we're kind of right in the middle. Um, we're, uh, the national average is twenty-eight point four percent. We're about, I don't know, maybe twenty-nine in the average high school and, and elementary middle. So here is our data. Um, by grade. Okay, and it's what you look at. And then these numbers are kind of, again, when you look at them, it's sort of how different they are.
I, I want to take a, a moment here. So we, we've been talking about absenteeism, it kicked off forever, right? If they're not in school, they're, they're not learning, how are you going to teach them? But, um, we'd look larger here. You guys are all in education. Every employer in, in, in the information of workforce is dealing with this right now. Um, this is sort of, it's like, education's the closest thing to the information of workforce. It's not, you know, we're, it's all learning. Basically, you know, we're on paper, we're reading books, we're on computers, right? It's a information, um, situation. People didn't come back to the office. Companies have shut down their offices, closed up shop, they no longer have HQs, they downsized. Solve, you know, denting absenteeism or solving it or improving it now is way different than before, and I don't think we're gonna, we're not gonna, we're not gonna solve the performance issues by, um, with the same strategies around transportation, food security, stuff like that, that we, we were looking at, um, pre-COVID. I mean, the reality is, we're gonna have to figure out how to perform when kids are not here. Because they're just not, they're not going to come back at the same numbers ever.
And this will be part of our conversation, will be, as a teacher, the, the teacher and the family, how we, how we.
And then I don't know, Andrew or Stephanie, if you're familiar, but even the state, even the way they're going to calculate chronic absenteeism is, is changing. So it's not, what I said about eighteen won't be the case at the end of this year. And I, I don't know enough to give you a coaching answer to what it will be, so I don't even want to, I don't, do you guys know what the?
I don't know.
I know it's changing and I don't know how they're going to compile that data, but I think it's because of what you said is, this now is a multi-year pervasive issue. We need to maybe look at it differently.
One of the biggest, one of the biggest things that, in elementary, is educating families.
Is making sure we educate the families, the importance of being here. Um, I know, and, and you can get on state lists for your attendance, right? I don't think we're there yet in Chatham, but I know in my past district, we were there, um, and we had to do a lot of interventions, um, to get kids to school and then COVID hit, right? And we had to start all over again. But, um, you know, this is something that schools have been dealing with for a very long time, and we, we have to educate the families because we need their support to try to get the kids here because it impacts them. So there's a lot of things we can do and we're going to be working on this with the team.
It would be super interesting to know geographically where are our absenteeism. Um, how much of this is transportation? Would be, that's a question that would be interesting to look at.
I'm wondering, what is the, what's the consequence for a kid that's been chronically absent? Is there no consequence?
No consequence. So back in the day, um, if you had a kid that was absent, um, you know, so many times you could call, you would call child protective services, um, but they're not taking those cases anymore. So there's really not a whole lot of consequence, other than us pleading and trying and sending people to the house. Um, but they're not taking those cases anymore, so there's really not a whole lot of consequence, other than us pleading and trying and sending people to the house, trying to get them here, we do a whole bunch of things, but you can't punish a kid for that being here. Because typically, there's a whole lot of other factors of why they're not here. So the state used to have the mechanisms in place that they no longer do, unless you have an IP.
If they're only here for 30% of days, right? There's probably other stuff going on.
Yeah.
That's probably still a CTS role.
Yeah, it could be, yeah, and we, yeah, so.
And I keep coming back to your question, Andrew, about what is FTSF, attendance is a piece of that too. And it is literally, I mean, that may be slides up here, right? We're talking kindergarten all the way through about looking into a why, what can we do, we call home, um, the communication piece. Uh, you remember like that when COVID schools got, um, the art funding, and you could use those homes for many different things? I, there were urban schools in our district who used that money to hire attendance people, right? Just to deal with this, while kids came, because it was, it was so much of a huge problem, so.
And we do do home visits as a district?
Do you have a whole kid back if they've been absent for so long? Because I was also looking at like iReady, and I'm like, those kids are like three grades below, I bet they're those chronic absentee kids. And all the extenuating factors aside, I mean, if you're gonna have to be in first grade again, or your kid's gonna have to be in second grade again, you might really try harder to get them to school. Because education's good, talking to them's good, but also being like, hey, your kid's gonna be nine in first grade. Get them to school, put them on the bus, but is that not a thing?
No, we have held kids back, and, um, you know, where it gets tricky is if the child has an IP. We don't typically hold, should we, we modify their program?
I mean, that's mostly kindergarten first, right? It's not.
Um, mostly, but we have. There's a lot of mental health aspects to that as well that could impact it, so it's not preferred in other.
You know, when we put the, the pre-K program in, one of the big arguments was if, if there should be some retention to move that forward. Um, I'm curious how we're performing now versus before that program, because right now, pre-K here for, I would, I would love at some point to know what, what, what is the pre-K program doing for us, because I don't really know.
Next one. Gotta keep moving.
So again, you see where we're, we're coming in right around that, that average, and you can go to the high schools too. And then you can also get those questions, why in grade 10, why in district, why, why are they lower? We can look into that, is there a reason? Is, that, that's the good stuff we can talk about. Okay, so that's what I have for you, can I answer any other questions?
Great data, thank you.
I, um, I circulated some observations about the K-A iReady. It would be really great to be able to look at that a different way. You guys can talk in general if you want, that's good for that, but, um, I'm just giving an example. Yeah, we talked, we could talk about it for a couple of years if we were focusing on reading so much, but there was something that's happened now.
And we, just, just to say, we are having those discussions about looking at that data, so more to come, for sure. We'll continue to delve into that, and then just the numbers and looking at them and see what we can pull, so, absolutely.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you, and I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to come monthly and just give a little snippet about what is happening within our special education department, because, um, we really do have a fantastic staff and working with them to really honor what we've been doing, but looking at ways where we can, you know, increase our best practices and, and making, um, systematic changes that will be beneficial for all of the students. So, um, I'm just gonna share a snippet about, we had our extended school year program this summer for those students whose special education teachers, um, had recommended that they participate in during the summer, um, due to significant regression noted following breaks on their, um, on their goal. So we had about 18 students participate. Um, we had a six-week session that ran from, we got right started July 1st, to the 11th of August. And, uh, we had three special education teachers, eight aides and assistants, and we have a nurse on staff. Um, we also, um, had our OTs and PTs and speech pathologists on board to provide those services that were outlined on the IP. So the students had a great summer, um, working on their goals. Um, the, uh, building staff was wonderful in making sure the rooms that our kiddos were in had an air conditioning unit, um, because many of those days were very hot. Um, so they were able to do a lot of great things, they went on trips, they went to the Gents Playhouse, um, they went to the Columbia County Fairgrounds to see a play, they went bowling. Um, our secondary students, they participated in all of that, but they also did a lot of community work, where they went with their teachers and they worked on their goals in, um, some local establishments and local stores. So it really gives them that opportunity to have that natural, authentic practice of their skills. So they really did have a great summer, and they engaged in all the fun activities that Andrew had talked about with our academy vehicles and the ice cream truck. Um, and it was a great success. Um, jumping right into this, with those teachers, it was, um, I, you know, wanted to make sure that we had a great relationship before we started, because it was all set up, and then, you know, Brian left, and, and here I am. So I met with everyone, the, all of the, uh, extended school year staff, the week before. And we had just a really great discussion about roles and responsibilities and expectations um, of, of what, what extended school year looks like, what are we used to, what is supposed to look like? Um, and that really, um, helps set the tone. We had, um, some kiddos that had some complex needs, and it really just gave everyone that confidence, um, that, that they could, you know, really meet the needs of these students and provide that support. So after that initial meeting, I also met with everyone, um, we did, I did a Google form. I did a Google form during the midpoint, and I met with all the teachers and got their feedback, and the aides and assistants, you know, were going really well, like, what do you see, what are some things we can improve on? Always wanting to make sure we're looking at our program. And they really gave me great feedback, um, everyone was very, very happy with the pre-meeting and having the ability to discuss, you know, questions or concerns, and having input, um, for some of our students who had medical needs, having the nurse provide overall training. Um, they, they, the staff was really happy with, um, collaboration. Um, they talked about really seeing students, um, responding to the program. Um, I also asked them, um, you know, do you have what you need? Do you feel like you're, what, you have what you need, is there something we can do? If they're needing better communication, and they were all very happy. Um, and I really do, looking at it from a systems point of view, I really wanted to get their input because, um, I was also at page some of those days, I'm, I'm working on my doctorate and stuff, so, um, I wanted to make sure we had that senior communication, and, and, and they were so wonderful. They were very professional, and I can't thank them enough, and I think the kids had a, a good experience. Um, moving forward, um, next month, I'll, I'll share some information about some of our internal goals. You saw our, our big priority goal, um, but as, as a team, we're going to really look, how are we gonna get there? How are we going to make sure that 10% of our kids are, at least are really showing that growth? Um, so we're going to be looking at a lot of, um, strategies and, um, best practices. Um, not just for our special education teachers, but really reaching out and working with our general education teachers, because these students still need support when their consultant is not there. Um, so stay tuned for more on that, but, um, I'm really excited to be here, and it is a wonderful, wonderful team that we have. Exciting things to come.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Just real quick, couple, couple of quick items, um, for one, I just want to thank the business department. Uh, we closed the books in June, it's very busy, we opened the books up for the new year, but then we had to prepare for the audit, so a lot of work gets put into that, and then the auditors came in in August. You know, I'll be getting, I should be getting a report probably early September, and then we'll meet with audit committee, and, you know, at the end of September, early October, look to adopt. Overall, it looks everything, and we looked at a lot of areas, they look, you know, overall good, but I'll get the final report and any recommendations in the upcoming few weeks. I'd also like to thank the facilities, uh, it was actually kind of nice to oversee that for the summer, I was busy, but happy we're hiring a director. But it was nice to see actually what really gets done, we had weekly meetings, and we had extensive lists of things that needed to get done. Um, and pretty much all of it's done, I mean, there's a few other things that we're gonna have to bring some people in, but, um, it was nice to be a part of that, uh, playground, I'm very happy we finally prepared this in a couple of summers, so I'm very happy that was done, new mulch and just the equipment that we needed to fix is done. Um, PA system, so we get ready for the football with our, you know, with Ichabod. So I'm excited, that's a million times better than what we had, and we really needed the upgrade, so that was done. And then boilers and maintenance inspections, I went on the fire inspection report, so that was good to get a perspective of that. Um, but I just want to thank the facilities and then the cleaning crew, you know, it's still a wonderful job, so. It's nice to kind of see whatever, everything that gets done in the summer, get a, get a perspective of what needs to get done. So those are really the two areas we talked about, obviously, the, the main thing is the, at the high school all the time, you know, we're really trying to get that ready and ready to go, and, you know, ready for the new year, so that's my report for the night.
Uh, hey Mike, did we get, did they finish the route work for, uh, transportation?
So I did get a transportation study in, uh, so, um, so I'm gonna review that with the, uh, the department out there when I get a chance, I've just gotta get through this, you know, building project.
Were they doing actually route design?
So they were looking at our routes, we hired them, and I, I looked at it briefly, I'm gonna have to get a call and review the report. So we did, uh, that was, they want, I wanted them to look at that and any recommendations. Um, so we're gonna go through that report, but we did eliminate one, one route this year, um, even before the report, so.
Um, with a neighboring district, with Ichabod, so we're doing some sharing as well. An outside run.
So I'll be going over that report, and the enrollment report also, when I get a chance, that just came in, so I'll be reviewing that with Andrew, and then we'll, we'll talk about that in the near future. We will do a board presentation on that, we have that scheduled.
Motion.
Oh, no, no. R10, be it resolved that the Board of Education adopt the Code of Conduct as revised and presented at the public hearing on June 17th, 2025, and July 8th, 2025. Motion.
Motion.
Second. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed?
Alright, so motion to approve district goals and priorities. R11, be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the 2025, 2026 district goals and priorities presented. A motion. Second. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? So consensus agenda. R12, be it resolved that the Board of Education accept the consensus agenda, J through L as written. Motion.
Second.
Any questions?
Comment, we have a kind library donation from the Baxton Foundation, um, thank you.
All in favor? Any opposed? And future agenda items?
Some time in the next year, we'd love to hear how's pre-K going from an impact perspective. I don't know if you even know how to crack that egg of the way things were before, the way they were after, but the goals were retained earlier, screened earlier, were the, sort of the tackle balls. The, the big thing to look at is.
Have to look at, we have to look to see how far back kindergarten has done iReady, but you can look to see where the kindergarten is compared to where they were. But we gotta, I don't know how far back, you said about.
This year's, this year, that was like, that was great.
So we'll have to see how much data we can collect. Yeah, see if they, I don't know, I, I know a lot of districts kind of had kindergarten do iReady last, because they were a little nervous about it, but.
Sometimes they don't start with January, some schools.
Yeah, they're nervous to have those kids take an assessment.
I guess if, I don't, I don't know that we have any hard decisions to make there, but if there's a hard decision to be made, it would be good to have some, uh, or it doesn't need to be data, just some opinions, um, before we have to make any decisions.
Maybe Kristin can gather some information on that and preview that when she does her building update.
I just wanted to add a comment to that, um, John and I have been developing the board timeline calendar. So you'll be able to see when all of these presentations are coming, we're, we're doing the final touches on it today. We're gonna get it to you right away, so you'll be able to look and see, okay, we're having a pre-K discussion on such and such a date. You know, it's gonna be laid right out, so everybody knows exactly what's coming, what information to expect. Um, and we'll get that to you very, very soon.
Oh, do you think you'll be ready for me to send that out Friday in my update?
I think so.
Okay, so yeah, we, so we have like, we're gonna have two different versions, there, there's gonna be a board one that has everything in it, and then just a presentation one that I'll share with my staff, so I'll, I'll probably on Friday just share the presentation one with you. Is that, does that work, Marianne and John? And then, and then you can then send with everything else in it?
I do have it on the board drive right now, it's under our, um, the board maintained templates, you could find it there. I've got a draft version there if you're curious, but, uh, we're still working on.
We had a really old board calendar, and then we drifted from it, and the calendar just became last year plus or minus, so.
I actually put the dates in there.
Look at the actual dates so that it's a living document that we can really refer to.
And then going forward, every year, somebody just goes, they erase the dates, put the ones that match our board meetings, and because everything, I took, um, our superintendent evaluations, our strategic planning, um, and the presentation, I put it all in one document, just so that we know, uh, last year, I, I ended up like missing a couple of board meetings, you know, like that, not getting things done on time, because I just didn't realize you were running out of board meetings. So I wanted to stay on top of that this year, so you'll see how detailed it is.
You said it's a living document if you go forward.
It'll just be a help.
The district's gonna maintain that?
It's a board.
So we met, we met, the three of us met yesterday, I do the presentation piece of it. So, um, meeting all the, like, UPK presentation, academic updates.
Okay, so you'll update that.
I'll take that part of it, and then you guys do the other part, but we're just gonna put them together, so you have one stop for them.
And it's all in our handbook right now?
Yeah.
If you look at all of the different documents in our handbook, it tells you, okay, this is the timeline for the superintendent evaluation process. This is the timeline for strategic planning, I just blended it all so that we know that we're not missing anything.
So on Friday, you'll get just the presentations from me, and that's what myself and the administrative team put together. So we're, we're taking care of that piece, and you guys will take care of all the other board, your deadlines. It just helps us with planning.
So, second public comment, is there any more?
At what, our total that I saw was 14, I saw earlier, yeah, we saw a couple more. Did you approve that, all the, once or two consensus agendas? Did you, you did them all? J through L. I thought I missed something, but let me. All of it, wow, that was all together. Yeah, there was. Yeah, there was, I thought there was, I thought it was broken to two, okay, perfect. Just want to make sure you guys didn't miss any, yeah, that was everything.
I have a very small question, and I'll use a very small answer sometime in the future. Um, we used to have, for at least a few years, we had a dedicated grant writer. Now we have a, a grant writer plus coordinator on demand. We saw so much impact out of some of those grants, and I'm curious, um, to what extent are we leveraging that tool? And I don't know if it's...
So, yeah, we have someone per diem as needed, um, she gets an hourly rate now. Um, that was a reduction in the budget before I came in, um, so when I came in, there was not one. I don't know the history about one that was reduced. I, yeah. Um, so, so we do, so, and that person I know moved away, um, but still does the work in a different city. Um, but we're very fortunate to have her. So, right now, she does our UPK grant, all of our title grants, and then other things as needed if she's available, right? So if another grant comes up, we could ask her to do it on an hourly basis, but she doesn't have the availability to be, to be doing that continuously, so she has a full-time job. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I know it is. So we'll continue to utilize her as long as we can, um, for those, for the grants that are maybe non-competitive. And as we get competitive ones, we can ask her if she can do it, but she doesn't have a whole lot of availability.
Be it resolved that the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss collective negotiation. Any opposed?
Motion.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? And the motion to appoint Andrew? Andrew for a district, or first term, or executive session?
Motion.
Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed?
Were in resolution tonight? Oh, we don't, we don't anticipate.
It's listed on the agenda, I'm saying, we don't anticipate.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
We're a jerk, yes.
We're not technically a jerk, so...
We're staying. Uh, we're just letting everybody else get on.